Welcome to the town act and planning board meeting for April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. I'll stand for the pledge.
Provisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, this is Roger, as an often, controlling often. More starts here to show up. Did everybody get a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes. Mr. General, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April third.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? Alright, we're gonna open up the hearing for Fairgrounds Variety Room one oh nine Milton Mills Road Map, two four one lot zero zero six, application zero zero one. Name the procedure, we'll, uh, each side will have a proceed without, without inter interruption. Questions may be asked to the chair and all persons at the hearing shall abide by the order of the chairman. So let Kendra come up and discuss it. And we'll get back into it.
Good evening, my name is Kendra Maris, I'm a civil engineer and project manager with the Mega Technics. We've met before. And I'm here representing E and E Holdings, joined by Adam, Krista, and Stephen. Generally the project team, but he, Adam is the owner, and Stephen is the general contractor. So if we have any questions regarding business operations, I'll do my best to answer, but I do have backup tonight. So generally, we're proposing a variety store. It's roughly six thousand square feet in size. Five thousand square feet of that variety store will be the store itself. One thousand square feet of that will be leased to Duncan. So we're also proposing a drive-through on the site. And we'll also have fuel canopies onsite. There are eight fueling positions for gasoline under one canopy, and then a second canopy for diesel fueling. We'll have two pumps or four nozzles for diesel. And several, I think four different types of, between gasoline and diesel will be offered. So access, the site's located on the corner of Route one oh nine and Milton Mills Road. And access to the site will come from two different points. One on Route one oh nine, Jason, thank you. And then another one on Milton Mills Road. We anticipate a larger amount of traffic coming from Route one oh nine, so we would call the one oh nine entrance the primary entrance. That's where we will place the project sign. And then the secondary access would be from Milton Mills Road. We, we pretty much propose that to encourage any traffic that may be coming from Iron Tales or from the Sanford area to take a left onto Milton Mills and then get access to the site from that side. We've also proposed a large parking area, as you can see, I think we are at, we have a parking table on there, forty-one spaces somewhere.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, sorry, we removed two spaces. So we're at thirty-nine parking spaces. We've provided onsite lighting, just enough for the site to be considered safe, especially for employees that might be leaving the facility after dark. But we had no intention of, of lighting this thing up. So it's, it's pretty minimal for a site of this size. And we've made sure to propose cutoff fixtures with downlighting that doesn't cast light upward. Kind of creating that, that glow that you see on older lights, they're, they're LED fixtures as well. So when you, as I mentioned, for the drive-through, when you drive in from the Route one oh nine side, you would continue straight through an internal intersection. The board may remember last time we were here, there was a stop sign proposed right there. Sorry for you guys. There was a stop bar here in a crosswalk. We've removed that to give traffic going straight into the drive-through the right of way, so as not to promote queuing that will back up into Route one oh nine. So that change has been made. And you'd continue on through the drive-through, and the drive-through window will be at the rear of the building. Yep, right there. And that's the southwestern side of the site. For stormwater, we have proposed three underground soil filters. They're shown as dashed lines, polygons on this site plan. We've designed those to meet D E P standards for treatment of stormwater as well as detention of stormwater. And about ninety-five percent of impervious areas, impervious being pavement, gravel, building, or any sort of rooftop, hard surfaces that don't allow water to percolate through. Ninety-five percent of those drain to a treatment B M P in order to meet that surficial treatment requirement from D E P. In addition, I mentioned treatment, we also have detention of stormwater, so they're two separate things. Detention is meant to collect runoff, or detention areas are meant to collect runoff and slow it down before it leaves the site. So we've run an analysis to prove that we are in fact reducing stormwater runoff rates at, at peak storm elevations. And there's certain criteria that we have to meet, I can go into that if the board or the public have any questions, any further questions. The underground storage tanks for the fueling facility are located kind of to the rear of the site. As far as other, there'll be some, all the gas lines going from those tanks to the fuel pumps are shown on our utility plan. In addition to those, we'll have underground septic. There will be two septic fields. And again, I can go to the utility plan later if there are questions on these items. In the large, largest landscaped island, that's where we'll be putting two septic fields. There are two because we'd like to keep septic separate for the store and the Duncan. Dunkins tend to have a lot of cream and oils that come from their operation. And so if anything is to fail, we'll know whose fault it is. So we're keeping those separate. And then for water, we're proposing a well in the landscaped island next to the drive-through. That will serve, you know, both portions of the, the building there. That's considered a public transient well because it serves over sixty people, I'm sorry, over twenty-five people throughout sixty days of the year. So it's a public water supply. We have certain regulations that we have to meet through the main drinking water program, which is a state program. They'll come and do testing on the well every six months or one year to ensure that, that the well water is adequate for public water supply. As far as traffic goes, we have done a traffic analysis. And we've determined that the number of trips are over one hundred trips in the peak hours. Peak hours are generally beginning of day during rush hour, end of day during rush hour. And then there's a, a peak hour on Saturdays. And it's all based on how much traffic Route one oh nine and Milton Mills currently sees. We had to file a traffic movement permit with the main department of transportation for that. It's a very long process, typically about a year. So we started, it must have been ten year, ten, ten years, feels like ten years, ten months ago with that, where we submitted what's called sections one through six. That's our initial analysis, it does have a lot of information. We reviewed that with D O T, they were happy with our findings, and they allowed us to move on to section seven. Section seven determines what will be required for off-site improvements. So anything that may be needed along Route one oh nine or on Milton Mills Road that will allow better access to the site, better safety, better pedestrian connectivity with other sites in the area. So we are going through that section seven process right now. We're asking the board to condition their local approval based on the fact that we'll supply our permit through D O T, a copy of it with, to the planning office. But I just would like to note to everyone that the town is actually involved in the completion of section seven. Jason will have to attend all meetings moving forward with the town. And the, and D O T will, will request Jason's input, as well as other, you know, the road commissioner, I assume. Will be involved with that process. So it kind of ends with the planning board at the local level, but there is town involvement beyond that. As far as stormwater goes, we talked about that, but I just want to note that we did submit a stormwater management law application to D E P, and we just received approval this week. So we have checked that box and we can supply a copy.
I gave them all a copy of it.
Oh great, I sent it already.
No, the state, I think the state sent it.
The state sent it, okay. I think that's all I have for, one more thing, the pedestrian, I just wanted to mention the pedestrian path. D O T required some sort of connectivity, pedestrian connectivity through the site, especially for times when the active fair is going on, or if we get any people walking from Iron Tales. So we opted, we had the option to either do a sidewalk along Route one oh nine or look at an internal trail sort of connection. What we ended up proposing was an internal connection because this section of Route one oh nine is a high speed. We felt that this was safer for the trail to be internal to the site. We can maintain it efficiently, keep it cleared of snow in the wintertime. It's made of a stone dust material that's easy, again, easy to maintain. And all other pedestrian connectivity that we proposed is by two-minute sidewalk. And those generally connect parking spaces to the building. Essentially, it provides a path for people that have parked their vehicles and want to walk into the building. The last thing I'll note is for the Duncan, I'm sure someone will ask, it's not just a drive-through facility, you can walk in and be served, but there is no inside seating. There is also no inside seating for the variety store, but we have proposed a little outdoor patio area for that purpose to kind of serve, serve both the Duncan and the variety store and food being served there. That's all I have. Any questions from the board?
You want to talk about the vegetation?
Not sure.
Oh, sure, yeah, I can go over landscaping. So generally, we have to maintain twenty-five foot buffers along abutting properties as well as along Route one oh nine and Milton Mills. So here you can see, I'm sorry, I'm not a landscape architect, but I have provided a plant schedule in the bottom right corner there. And the common names of all plants listed are there. There are a lot, a lot of large trees, especially on Route, on Route one oh nine, we've proposed a lot of canopy trees. We've pulled them back a little bit, the, the twenty-five foot setback or buffer area I'm talking about is in green, the dash line in green. So we did our best to fill that area in on Milton Mills Road, but we kind of had to pull the trees back along Route one oh nine, which just provides a larger buffer essentially. But we just were worried about power lines. We don't want to be planting trees under power lines. So generally, we've maintained a natural buffer along the southwestern property line, which residential, I'm sorry, abuts a residential property. So that buffer is, I think at its widest point, it's about sixty-five or seventy feet wide. That will remain forested as it is in the existing condition. Alright, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions from the public as well.
We'll open up to a public comment, any comments from the public? Come up to the podium.
I understand the need and the desire for the gas station and the variety store. But I think my concern is the size and just the scope of this. Looking at the population between Acton and Chapley, we're looking at about five thousand residents versus Sanford's twenty-two thousand. It was hard to get a Sanford exact number because they just showed estimates of twenty-one and twenty-four. But I just have to wonder, do we need something that provides for twelve pumps in this community? And kind of going hand in hand with the variety store, you know, six thousand square feet, that's a lot. That's a really big space. Be curious to know what they're proposing. I understand there's a connection with the milk room, is it going to be similar to that? Is it going to be more like a Cumberland Farms? And I guess I'd also like to see, you know, a sketch of a facade so that maybe it's more like a barn as opposed to the big Cumberland Farms.
Want, want to put Adam on the spot so he can come up and tell us what's going to, the store is going to consist of?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so it'll be similar to like the milk room. I'm gonna have a large grocery selection there. So that's, the main floor is gonna be a large grocery.
So when you're saying groceries, are you talking about chips and snacks and things like that? Or are you gonna offer, you know, some local products as well with farmers and growers here?
Yep, whatever, anybody local wants to come in and sell their product there, definitely like to do that stuff as well. A big section of it will be for the kitchen as well. So we're gonna have like, it's gonna be like three layers to the kitchen kind of, like the front part will be where we'll have like beer cold subs and stuff like that. And then we'll make the pizzas behind there, and then the dishes and everything like that's gonna be back behind there. So that takes up a good portion.
Okay, good, good, that, I mean, that just gives us more variety and something for everyone.
Yes, yeah, I was told it was gonna be similar to the commons market, can you mark? Yes.
I caught it, well, we both did. Any other questions or comments from the public? Wanna?
At this point, are you looking mainly for questions for the engineers or physicians on what we think, or both?
Yeah, kind of both.
Okay, well, one question I have is, and I might have not understood it, about the pedestrian access. So my question is, will there be crosswalks and pedestrian caution signs on one oh nine and Milton Mills for people to be crossing, particularly from the fairgrounds?
That'd be Kendra?
Do you want me to do a list, keep a list and then answer at the center?
Yes, please.
Would you like to address? Okay.
Another question I have is, and this may be in the purview of department of transportation, but whether any considerations been given to stolen traffic light? And if so, I think that might actually not only increase safety, but enhance emergency services because if the fire department and so forth can actually change the lights to red, then it would be much easier for them to get through with opposing traffic being stopped. I regularly see people not stop for fire trucks and so forth. And that way they could control traffic and have it stopped. So I think that's it for questions. I support the project. I think, you know, as someone that lives in Acton and doesn't look forward to driving to Sanford or Rochester.
Yes.
When I need just incidental items. I think that's something I look forward to. I think it's great, particularly for elderly people here, to not have to drive as far. You know, arguably, somebody might be able to stay in their own home longer if they have a local convenience store. And we have had jobs, there'll be more jobs here. When, when we have applications for permits, whether it's the Renaissance Fair, for example, I have often thought that, that doesn't really do much for any like cottage industry or offshoots from that, because we don't have anything here. But if we did have a local grocery store, if we did have the gas station, particularly if the grocery store is gonna sell sandwiches and pizza and so forth, then we do get more, an increase in local business by hosting events like the Renaissance Fair and the Acton Fair and so forth. So I think that's another plus for our economy. And I think that's it, I mean, I know there's resistance to change. And I understand that. But I, I think that this may be a positive change for the community. And I think also frankly, if, if what's being proposed meets the criteria of the ordinance, that that's really the question. And if, if folks focus on things other than that, then it would just potentially end up something that's mitigated in the superior court. So I'm hoping that, you know, people can express their opinions, be heard, accommodations as much as possible, but if it meets the criteria for the ordinance, then I think that's really the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, hurry. I'm gonna lead this to the board, I'm assuming someone's gonna answer this, but in terms of the traffic logistics on one oh nine and the thirteen street entrance, just wondering.
Right across the street.
Yeah, I know it's right across the street. I'm seeing when the fairgrounds come in, the Renaissance Fair, trying to figure out logistically, are we thinking a light or are, are we gonna leave it? Preferably, I wouldn't like a light for the majority of the time, but at a certain point, it's gonna be an issue. So I'm assuming it's a traffic study that somebody's gonna do to say, it makes sense for the light or not. But cars do come flying down one oh nine going southbound, coming out of thirteen sometimes. You gotta really hit the gas to make sure you don't get rear-ended by somebody, so.
You, Roger, also live on thirteen street. I hadn't seen before that it came out across from thirteen street, so first time coming to the meeting. So I guess I also have concerns with that, with the Renaissance Fair because that whole fair is kind of a cluster for thirteen street anyway. And really not a lot gets brought to the community for that, other than a lot of construction, traffic. But I don't know if they want to reduce speed, or I agree, I did not want the traffic light there every day because there's, in the winter, there's not really a lot of traffic. I don't know if they've looked at reducing the speed, but I mean, cars do come down that one oh nine at a high rate of speed. And where we're at the bottom of thirteen street, we're at that disadvantage. But by the time you see him crossing that hill, you know, it's too late, you're, you're waiting because you're not gonna make it out. I have seen, and I don't know what the statistics are, but you know, definitely at the intersection for Milton Road, Milton Mills and one oh nine, I have seen more, you know, motorcycle crashes and bikes down and CPR in progress and life lights every summer. And I guess I just also have concerns with how many cars the drive-up can handle before it's backed up into one oh nine, before we have traffic backing up onto one oh nine with people trying to turn in and out into both directions. Because as you know, you know, thirteen street's seasonal road, so traffic in town increases quite a bit. So that's just kind of my concern with the increase is just if it gets backed up and you have people trying to turn both lanes and then the bikes and the fundraisers that they do also, just a lot of extra congestion in that area. And Duncan's, I would imagine, will be a pretty big hit in town. So that's just my kind of thought for that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I have to speak for the trees. It's mostly the lighting. I did understand that the lighting will be focused downward, which is helpful. So much, so many lights with all the building going around, where lights are not considered, how, how they lighten the sky, the sky doesn't get dark. I have two or three plus some neighbors who have those giant lights that come on in my bedroom window, which I'm, you know, that kind of thing. It's important for the, for the migration of the birds that things go dark at night. And, and I, it's, the night sky is one of the benefits of many people come from a long ways away to enjoy that. And to enjoy the wildlife. I kind of wish there were a Dunkin' Donuts. There are three of them, just not far away. But a small place that made its own coffee and sold it, and it's allergies and things, that works for me. But, you know, I make coffee home. And if I need groceries, I plan my trips, I go downtown and get it all done at once. And I'm not exactly elderly, but I'm not young. And, and having a variety store and a Dunkin' Donuts does not improve my quality of life, just so anybody knows already. And the traffic is gonna be, they've already covered that. But I think more about the lights and, and the Dunkin' Donuts, I guess.
Thank you. Anyone else, if you want to come up and comment a question?
Kendra, can I answer those questions?
Yeah, Kendra, you wanna come up and answer?
Sure. First off, thank you to everyone who came up and spoke, uh, spoke and voiced your concerns. We appreciate hearing from you and, and value your input. So I'll start with the general size and scope of the project. It requires a lot of pavement in order to get the types of vehicles that we anticipate using those fuel systems to be able to maneuver around the site. So that is why you see the kind of, the kind of scale that, that you're seeing because you require thirty-foot drive-aisles, anticipate quite a bit of truck traffic coming from Route one oh nine and using this fueling facility as there isn't a lot of, or there aren't a lot of options in the area for those big trucks to get fuel. So that's why you see as much pavement as you do. Once you have that amount of pavement, you, you have to treat it all. So then you start having to use landscaped areas in order to accommodate stormwater treatment and detention. It's a good, it's a good thing to have all of those in place, but they do take up space. And then Adam addressed the type of items that will be served in the variety store, so I won't go into detail on that. I just wanted to note that we did supply a floor plan and building elevations so that, those plans, Jason can probably pull up after, if you'd like to see them, they're on public record with the town. As far as pedestrian access, we have done our best to provide pedestrian access inside of the site. That wasn't the question though, the question was connectivity to other sites. Unfortunately, the speed limit on Route one oh nine, I think is around fifty miles an hour in this area. And D O T absolutely will not lower it, we've had that conversation. There's a lot of research behind lowering speed limits and how ineffective it is actually slowing people down. It depends on what's around you, what's up the road, what's down the road. But in this area, at this time, with the development that's there now and what's proposed, it doesn't make sense based on their research. So because the speed limit is so high, we actually can't put a crosswalk across Route one oh nine from the fairgrounds to this site. However, we have proposed, at the one oh nine entrance, we proposed a, like a trail crossing signage. There'll be one on each side of Route one oh nine, so it at least provides an area or an indicator of where people could cross. There won't be a crosswalk, but hopefully, you know, people that are driving through the area recognize and get to know that that is a crossing point that's, that's well-marked, at least. And again, that's why we've provided the internal pedestrian connection. Once you get across the street, you have a safe place to walk to get to the developed area of this site. Traffic light, again, because the speed is so high in this area and for reasons I just explained, a traffic light was not, it's not that it wasn't considered, it just, it just wouldn't make sense in this area. The rare occasion when you do have, and there is a lot of congestion, I live in Sanford, I drive through this area all the time, and I understand how bad it gets during the Renaissance Fair and the Acton. And I understand how bad it gets during the Renaissance Fair and the Acton Fair. But a traffic light won't necessarily fix that problem. As part of the TMP that we're working on with DOT, we do have to work with the fairgrounds to develop some sort of traffic control, temporary traffic control during those fairs. What that looks like at this point is going to be temporary signage that's actually put out by the town. Our applicant will be required to do that because it's not our event that's going on. But the town will likely have to put out signage. And they'll be involved in the process for proposing those traffic control measures. And it's kind of an ongoing thing. But we recognize that it's a problem. And we're working through the best solution for that during those two very large events. What is likely to happen? As part of our sections one through six research with the TMP, as well as section seven, is there, I just wanna be very clear, most likely will be a turning lane, a left turning lane that serves Milton Mills Road. So it actually would extend from Milton Mills down along the frontage of Iron Tales. And what that will do is, it really will help Iron Tales, the situation. People will generally slow down when they see a turning lane. People turning right out of Iron Tales, that will be the same movement that there is now. But again, traffic should be moving a little bit slower with everything going on in the area. People coming from Chapley, taking a left onto Milton Mills, which actually sees quite a bit of traffic. You wouldn't, you wouldn't know it, but it really does. We actually had to increase the number of trips as part of our analysis from what we had originally anticipated. And a turning lane will make things a lot safer at that intersection itself. So that is, that is most likely what you will see there in the future. It's just a matter of figuring out how long it will be and how far down past Iron Tales it will extend. The drive-through. So we have, we're required to have internal space to queue 12 cars at the drive-through facility. If you could scroll down just a little bit, Jason. So that's not, that measurement isn't taken from the drive-through window itself. It's actually taken from the order board. So once cars have moved up to the drive-through window, there'll be even more, there'll be space for even more cars. But we essentially can fit 13 cars from the order board all the way back to that internal intersection or kind of T that you're seeing there. And then an additional, because we've allowed the people coming from 109 into the drive-through to have the right of way, we can queue within that internal intersection. So two additional, two to three additional cars would be there. And then an additional five cars back to 109. So eight and 13, or 21 cars can actually stack up from the order board all the way back to Route 109. In addition to that, you have to consider that some people will be coming from the convenience store or the fueling area, coming around to the drive-through. So we have plenty of car queuing on the right-hand side of the site as well. That hasn't been calculated, but there's a very large, significant length of drive aisle for cars to queue on that side as well. Lighting. So as I mentioned, all our light fixtures are dark sky compliant. They're full cutoff. Not only are they cast down and not up, but they have shields on the backside of them so that they cast down and forward, rather than kind of creating a circle or full diameter around the pole itself. They're more facing out and down. We've submitted a photometrics plan with our original submission. And the requirement is that we can't have light spill over at the property line. We're nowhere near having light spill over at the property line for the entire site. I think that covers pretty much everything. Anything else that I missed?
I got a couple of questions. I guess, question is, when you were talking about the town, I'm gonna put the signs up. Wanna specify, what do you mean by the town putting signs up for the events? And on the turning lane, I look at everything as I'm in one of my trucks on 80 to 100,000 pounds, coming down 109 at 50 miles an hour. And my concern would be, wouldn't be putting a turning lane on, from, onto Milton Mills Road. My concern would be the turn-in coming off the hill, coming down 109, at the entrance off 109. Myself, I would think that's where the turning lane would be. Because when you're coming down at 50 miles an hour, someone says, crap, I forgot my coffee. And I'm 100,000 pounds and I'm on brakes. That, where at the bottom it's flat, I'm slowing down, you know, I can slow down easily. That's just, you know, that's just my thoughts. On, and I don't know if, has anybody contacted the 13th Street Road Section or the fairgrounds? As far as I know, there is a, they are talking about moving that road north up to where they put the entrance, where they're doing the parking now. So that may be something where that might alleviate that problem. But they, I, I do know somebody that's on that association. They say that is in the works. But my recommendation would be to have a turning lane on the high side, not the low side. And I like the little explanation on how the town put the signs up.
Jason, is there an active permit for that? Has that's changed?
No, it's just, it's just, I've had discussion with someone who's in charge of fairs. And that's what they, they had said that their intentions are, they wanna regain that property back and alleviate, get rid of that where they turn into it. Because they just want that back to the fairgrounds property. There is a, if you drive down 109, you will see an entrance. That's what they're proposing. Instead of having 13th Street take a sharp left and then a right onto 109, they wanna just have it go straight through.
Yep. Familiar with the plan. All I can really say is that the reason we've positioned the entrance to our site on 109 where it is is because it's safest to align it with existing driveways and roads. That's where it is. We take into consideration applications in the immediate area when we're considering traffic calming measures. But because there's no application in place for us to actually really consider at this time, it makes us difficult to anticipate how we can react to that driveway entrance changing. As far as coming down 109 from deeper into Acton, I hear you. I had kind of the same thought. But the fact of the matter is that when we run all of these analyses, there's much more traffic coming from the Sanford-Chapley side of things than there is from the Acton side. And so as a whole, the safety of all entrances and this intersection, that is why there most likely will be a turning lane at the Milton Mills entrance and not up the hill. There is a possibility, we don't know yet, that the turning lane could extend all the way up from Iron Tales all the way to the entrance. But it would be a left turning lane into the site. There will no, there's no possibility of there being a right turn into the site coming from the Acton side.
Then what was the, signage?
Signage.
Sorry.
Signage.
Signage for the town.
You made a remark that the town would be putting up event signs.
Oh, yes, right. So yeah, traffic control measures. Road Commissioner, who would be putting those signs up during the event?
I would say that you'd better be putting sign-ups up to town.
Okay.
I'll answer that for you.
Are you the road commissioner?
No, I'm the chair of the select board. Okay, and I, we issue permits for these events.
Yep.
We do not put signs up. As far as I know, and I'm not gonna talk to the whole port, but I don't believe that we're gonna be sending our road commissioner up to that side up for anybody. What we do is, what we give these permits out, what are they called?
Mask gatherers.
Mask gatherers, I'm sorry. When we give a mask gatherer a permit, we set requirements. We give them requirements on what they have to do. So when the Renaissance Fair comes in, which is gonna be three weeks this year, we set requirements that they have to do traffic control, that they gotta put the signage up. We do not want any sort of fiscal, we don't want any currents on the town of Acton financially. So, so that's, I guess that's that.
Yeah.
If you wanna know who puts the signs up for it, it's us.
Yeah.
We're the ones that put on it.
Yeah. It's a really, it's a really difficult topic to approach because here you have an applicant for a project that is going through all these steps to do what's right and spending a lot of money to control traffic and increase safety in this area, especially if off-site measures are required for this project. So to put the responsibility on the applicant of putting out signs for an event that is somebody else's event, just isn't fair. And it's not, it's also just not going to happen, frankly. And so we talked about this with DOT. And what it came down to was, we asked the question, well, why isn't the Acton Fair or the Renaissance Fair required to do a TMP for their event? Why aren't the traffic control measures, I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but why aren't the traffic control measures being left to them? And unfortunately, because it's our permit and we're not required to do anything, we're required to put forth a plan that will increase safety. But we have no control over how it's implemented. So it's a good question, but it's a difficult one for me to give you a straight answer on. Without, from our position and probably from DOT's position, they would go to the town to do it because that's the only way they know that it will happen. I understand the incurred costs and the level of difficulty. But I don't, I don't know, Ben, do you have any input on that? It's a hard question to answer. Yeah. I mean, you require that, sorry, I cut you off. You require that when you issue the permit, that the fair does it, but are they doing it? So what's the enforcement?
So what we do is, we don't, the fairgrounds, we don't actually make the fairgrounds do it. We make the applicant do it. Whether or not enforcement is another thing. Usually the enforcement is if you don't do it, we will either take away the mask gatherer permit or we won't issue another one. Is the state, I guess I'm confused here, is the state telling you that you have to do this?
We have to come up with a traffic control plan for when these large events occur, essentially the Renaissance Fair and the but, but we're not required to put out the signage. We just need to provide input so that somebody else can do what's safe.
Okay, yeah, okay.
David, if I can make a comment. In regards to the mask gathering permit, can it be a stipulation that all of, that there is no parking on the westerly side of 109 and that all of the parking be on the easterly side of 109? That way you don't have people crossing over all of the time. And it keeps that line of traffic flowing much better. Parking on both sides of that road does not work.
So, well, I understand that. And we don't wanna turn it into a public care or a mask gathering.
But this also affects that.
But there's a problem. We can put stipulations, whether or not we enforce them or not. But the problem is, it's tough because we don't own 109. 109 is a state road, okay? So we can't tell whether you do want a state road. Now, the only problem, one thing we can do is, okay, law enforcement, ambulance and all that, whether or not, you know, that's gonna be applicable to the situation or not. Tell people they can't park on one side of the road, I don't know if we can do that. We can try to do that, as well as we can enforce that. And, you know.
Wouldn't that be part of a traffic plan in conjunction with the fairgrounds' variety and eliminating some of the traffic and the pedestrian crossing?
Yeah, I guess. But I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna put the traffic somewhere else.
It seems to me that DOT, you know, if they want you to come up with a plan, working with the town and working with fairgrounds' variety by eliminating the parking on that westerly side of 109 will eliminate a tremendous amount of hazard.
Right, but then they'll all go to Milton Mills Road and do that. Yeah, they'll plug up Milton Mills Road too. So, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, I the Renaissance Fair, hopefully, it's gonna be a temporary thing. Because they're talking about moving to Springville and all that, da-da-da-da-da. But for the meantime, all we can do is require that they have traffic control. We can't tell them where they can't park. Now, 13th Street's another store that's a private road. They can tell them they can't park there. We can't. One thing that we do do is we make sure that they don't block off roads. We tell them to put up things so no blocking driveways. But we can't tell them where they can't park on one side of the road or the other. So, because we don't have jurisdiction over that road, really. You know, so myself, I think it's kind of ridiculous that the state would incur something on the town of Acton's, or even you, that you're not putting on the event. I mean, why you should be worried about it. But I guess you gotta play with the rules that you gotta go by, right? So we'll work, the town of Acton, you know, the select board will obviously work but do what we have to do as long as there's not, you know, financial pressures.
I'd offer that, I had mentioned, the town will continue to have input through Jason, CEO, and the road commissioner. We can invite anybody we like to these, to these meetings that will continue to occur. So I mean, you may be a good, a good voice to bring to the table as we form that plan. It's not going to be an extensive plan, just because, as I said, what's fair to our applicant to have to, you know, the process that we have to go through for this fair? But maybe DOT would recommend restricting parking on one side of the road. As, as you've stated, it all has to go somewhere so that it becomes a problem somewhere else. But it may discourage people crossing the road so much. So I'll just offer that, you know, it's an ongoing conversation. We've heard your concerns. I have a lot more information than I had before. So we'll, we'll use that information to develop a plan with DOT. Let's see, Ken.
Just one thing, I'm from 13th Street also.
Yeah, you can come up to the podium, please.
So I'm from 13th Street also. I did speak with the fairgrounds this week. And they have no plans of moving the entrance from 13th Street to 109. They did speak to the DOT and they said they can't do it. So it's gonna stay as is. So Dave's concerned, and we'll take it.
I talked to Roger there a week ago, told me that they're still talking about it.
I wanna say, I think I, and maybe others, but I would find the project, any reservations or objections I have about it, would be less so if the Dunkin' Donuts were not included. I think that the traffic issue will be dramatically different. I don't think you're gonna have the concern about people being backed up and out onto a main road, waiting to get into a convenience store in the same way that that does tend to happen with a fast food establishment. I think also there is probably less distracted driving and impulse stopping for the gas station, convenience store than there is for a fast food establishment. So if, you know, I certainly understand in constructing a building wanting to have that income, rental income, I assume, you must, these folks own the Dunkin' Donuts too. But, you know, maybe a concession for the community might be to either forego that extra business or to do something other than a fast food establishment. I think it would be a lot safer, less people crossing back and forth for Dunkin' Donuts or fast food and traffic. It would be a lot safer without that.
I appreciate the comment. I, I think that you're gonna get just as many people going, oh, I need gas, as you are, oh, I need a coffee. And the benefit of the second entrance is that if they've missed that first entrance on 109, they can take a right-hand turn at Milton Mills. And I understand it's gonna take some, some time for people in the area to get used to how this site works and functions. But they do have the option of the second entrance if that occurs. So I have for that comment.
I'm with Dave. There should be a right turn only lane coming down the hill. Because you got these people, like, if you drive a big truck, it doesn't matter how, how much you're paying attention, whatever, something's gonna happen there. I mean, there's no price tag on safety. I don't understand why they can't. They can put a left turn lane all the way up the road, why can't they put a right turn lane? I got nothing against the store or the Dunkin' or whatever. But it'd just make a little more sense and it'd be a lot safer, I think. more sense and it'd be a lot safer, I think.
Can I just make a follow-up? I think with the Renaissance Fair and Iron Tales and the events that are likely to happen over especially three weekends, we've seen them kind of simultaneously on individual weekends. If the Renaissance Fair is truly coming here for three weekends, that's a real problem, not only for us who live on 13th Street, but for anyone who travels, especially on these trucks, because the cars are parked on both sides of the road where they can. And some people are getting really creative and they're literally parking their cars in the ditches, so, you know, in the snow ditch. And the problem with this is people are looking for parking and no one's watching the kids. And the fact that there hasn't been an issue with the Renaissance Fair in particular, with kids kind of running out into the middle of the road when they've got a big truck coming, and as Adam said, you just can't stop. You can't, you can't stop fast enough in a car. So that's my anxiety speaking, but I just, I can't imagine that there's anyone else in this room who would disagree with that. If you haven't seen it firsthand, you just can't imagine. And it's not 109, it's East Shore Drive. I mean, there's just, there's nowhere for these people to go. And when they can't find parking, they just simply stop in the middle of the road. So there's a lot of chaos that just hasn't turned catastrophic yet.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing for comments and move forward. Thank you for coming up. If the public wants to leave, we're going to continue on with the meeting. Give me a couple minutes.
What's that? DOT. So it's, it's what they call a state e. So basically they need three seasons of the year. Like soccer games. I'm just wondering about signage and stuff like that, but nothing I can give up on that. You can come to the office and see what somebody wants to... Not very... That's still, that's still... Signage and stuff like that, but nothing I can give up on that. You can come to the office and see what somebody wants to... Yeah, I don't, nothing. But you're more likely to come to the office. It's all public records and you can look at it. It's really, they don't really have... It's like, it's what they call like...
All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to what it'll be, a little five-minute siesta. Old Business, the Fairgrounds Variety, Route 109 and Milton Mills Road, map 241, lock 006-01, application for site plan review. Everybody heard the comments and the questions from the public? Got any comments on them or...
No, but I got good input. I got a good input, couldn't hear that.
I'll just note that we, we have submitted supplemental information since we last saw you. You have a new set of plans, so I just, I thought I'd go over the changes that we made just to regroup. So we did remove two parking spaces on that bank of parking that's furthest away from the building in order to meet the requirement of having three landscaped islands instead of four. So we're down to 39 spaces. We have, what else did we do? I'm blanking now. Oh, we removed the, the stop bar and the crosswalk at the internal intersection to give people coming off of 109 the right of way through to the drive-through. We also revised the traffic section of the application in order to give you a little bit more information on the peak, I'm sorry, trip generation and the peak hours that was asked for. And we clarified the required site distance at both entrances versus the site distance that you'll actually see in the field. We are meeting those requirements. I don't know if it's explicitly stated in the traffic narrative itself that we revised, but there was a question about how much traffic would be coming from the future development up the hill, which will be served by the hammerhead that we created as part of this project. I can say now that that is likely to be a storage facility, mini storage. It will have, storage has very low trip generation. I think in the peak hour, there's five trips expected. So the number of trips from the use that was going to be proposed to the use that is now going to be proposed has been reduced significantly, but we're still getting a lot of trips from the Dunkin' itself. It causes the most amount of trips. But I just wanted to note that the change of use there, I think I explained last time, as part of the TMP, we did have to provide information on all three projects that will be happening. You don't have an active application in front of you for two of those. You have it in, in front of you for the fairgrounds only, fairgrounds variety tour. But we have incorporated that change into the TMP that will be issued. So all the information that DOT has will match the information that you have when we submit an application for the future development to the north.
Did you say how many, during the peak hours, how many cars that the store is going to generate at that moment?
Yeah.
On the last page of your, of the April 10 submission?
A hundred and three in the morning, somebody wanted a, a hundred fifty, I had priority.
That sounds low.
You have...
Four, it's 408. It's 408 in the, oh, it's just a proposed coffee shop. 408 in the morning, 294 in the PM, and 409 on Saturday hours. But just to explain, that's not the number of cars, it's the number of trips. So a trip is one car entering and leaving. So it's essentially half the amount that's listed is the number of cars that you'll see coming into and out of the site.
Say that again?
A trip is...
In and out. Back and forth. In and out, so, yes, so...
The cars you'll see on the side here.
It's 403, they're saying 200 and something cars.
Okay.
So, 200 and a half, I don't know, I get half of them.
There won't be 408 cars entering the site in any amount.
A trip is not equivalent to a vehicle, okay?
It's a half a car.
Half a car, got it, okay.
Were there any other changes put on there?
We, I'll talk to the waiver section. We removed, this wasn't a planned change, but we removed the, we had a discussion on the parking being in the front of the building rather than to the side or the rear. We, we landed on not needing a waiver for that because within the standard itself, it says that for large-scale developments, you can have the parking in the front. So we rescinded our waiver there and then we replaced it with a waiver for the drive-through use being abutting a residential use to the north, I'm sorry, the southwest. And I can explain a little bit about that, we've been over it many times, but the reason for that standard, in the standard itself, it talks a lot about noise and buffering. As I mentioned earlier, we're proposing a 65-foot natural buffer between the property line and the order board, which will be the source of most of the noise coming from this facility. So there's a 65-foot natural buffer there. From the property line to the order board itself is actually 175 feet. That looked a lot, I mean, even to me at, at our site visit, that looked a lot further than you might think. So there's, there's pretty good separation there and I won't speak for the neighbors who live, live to the southwest, but they did appear to be very happy with that distance. And I also met with them personally before the site distance, it was like a two-hour meeting to go over these plans, and they were quite happy with how far away that order board is. We also told them that the owner will continue to work with them if they have any issues about noise. So those are things to note. I also would like to note that residential uses are allowed in all zones in Acton. And so there's really no place that we could put this drive-through on the site, which is an allowed use, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be breaking this kind of rule that drive-throughs can't be adjacent to residential uses. Just something to consider. There's a bit of a contradiction in the language there.
So I, I think that's a pretty good overview of the updates and I, I think we've, we've discussed those over the last couple of meetings. I think they're actually shown on these plans. That was one of the things that we, we talked about is like just, the approach was to kind of get everything on the table and then do an updated plan set rather than come back with a new plan set every single time. So I think that's consistent with the prior discussion. The, this project did, just for folks in the audience, let's see if you have familiar faces, they, they do know that there was a site walk on April 3rd. Tonight was the public hearing for this project. The board can act on the waivers. There are three waivers and I think that might be one of the, the first things that would be appropriate to do and then kind of go through the rest of the findings. And it is possible that the board, depending on how far we get, that the board could, could act on this application. We, we talked about the, the timeframe to do that. With the public hearing being held this evening, we're going to do it tonight. There's also some time left for an additional meeting if necessary. So I, I think that some of these waivers are, waiver requests, it'd be relevant to maybe learn a little bit more about how they fit in with some of the findings. The, the first one is access into the site where the ordinance standard, and I'll back up a second, say, you know, waivers are not automatic requests. They are like a, a request for, it's a deviation from the standards that are in the ordinance. The standards by default apply, so the board, that's why you need to like consider and vote on a, basically an exception from the standards. So that said, these three ordinance waiver requests are, are things that in our view in the office were, were reasonable to consider. You know, it wasn't anything that was just like out of hand, just, you know, the board shouldn't discuss this, or the board has never granted this kind of waiver before. But with that said, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair, just kind of walk down through them in order, if that's how you'd like to do that. The first one is access into the site. And the ordinance standard says where a lot has frontage on two or more streets, primary access to and egress from the lot must be provided from the street where there's less potential for traffic congestion and for traffic and pedestrian hazards. Access from the other street may be allowed if it's safe and does not promote short cutting through the site. Applicant in this case is proposing a main entrance on 109 and a secondary entrance up on Milton Mills Road. So by default, the, the first, the ordinance says you can get one entrance and it would be off Milton Mills. So this design, it would require the waiver request. In our view, the board can reasonably consider this waiver request since main DOT is reviewing the roadway improvements along 109 that are associated with this. When this was written and every meeting we've had so far has basically been like, we, we know that the DOT is working with the applicant on these things. I think we started to get a, a clearer sense of what some of those requirements on 109 would be. And the board ultimately needs to make some conclusions on this project that traffic, I'm going to scroll down to the last page of the memo, or the second to last page. The board needs to make findings that vehicular access to the site is or is not on roads that have adequate capacity to accommodate additional traffic generated by the development. And the one below that says vehicular access to and from the development is or is not safe and convenient. So those are fairly broad statements, but, you know, based on the information that the applicant's provided regarding their coordination with DOT, based on some of the input that you've heard from the public tonight about traffic and traffic speeds, like those are all inputs into your discussion and decision about the waiver request. So I don't know if you want to keep walking through or you want to like address a waiver as...
Don't do one at a time or...
We can do one at a time if you want, I mean, it's fine. Where there's no confusion.
Just jumping back in, so in terms of like, you know, mixing and matching words, if you don't mind. So waivers, these are variance requests. These are variances from the ordinance, correct?
The ordinance gives the planning board the ability to grant a waiver, which is, it's a slight distinction.
Okay.
It variances from the zoning standards around lot size or frontage, building envelopes. A waiver is a deviation from standards of site plan review or subdivision review. So it's a performance standard, it's not a zoning standard. This application meets all of the zoning standards for lot size, frontage, it's a permitted use. So it meets, in our mind and the board will need to confirm this, all of the other standards in the ordinance, but this is a, an exception to the, the ordinance in that regard. I think it's also important to note that in the wording of that standard, it does explicitly say that access from other streets may be allowed if it's safe. And so the board can consider other waivers from other standards that don't always have that, so I think this implies to me that this anticipates that... So I think this implies to me that this anticipates that corner lots, which have frontage on two roads. There, there could be situations where entrances on both of those roads or, and entrance on each would be something the board could consider.
You want the section, three here or no?
No, I'm looking at it, yeah, I'm just looking at it. So these are not, so these, okay, so these are, let me just be clear, these are not variances.
Correct.
Correct, okay, alright.
Yeah, and it's, it's a fine distinction.
Yep.
But it's an important distinction.
It is, yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, so looking at, just running your numbers and then comparing it to DOT's average annual data trip publication that they put out every year. Just doing some back, back of the napkin math, originally I thought it was every car. So I was coming up with thirty, like a thirty percent, basically a thirty percent increase at that, right at that intersection of how much traffic, cut that in half to about fifteen percent. So that's, that's basically what I came up with and that's based on a four thousand seven hundred and fifty trip passing right by that, that, that intersection every single day as an average. And that comes from DOT's publication that they put out every year for annual average trips. And then adding, just adding together your numbers, comes up to about fifteen percent on average. And then I don't, I don't have the slightest idea what that would be during the events. I don't have the slightest clue.
Those events are just, you can't, yeah. You can't compare the events to a, to a daily thing because when those events come to town, your traffic for one thing goes from fifty to twenty-five.
Yeah.
You, there's no longer people speeding. People are forced to slow down for the amount of traffic that are on the side of the roads, people crossing roads. So yeah, the events, I mean, I understand the whole traffic control and stuff like that, but those events, they're so busy and congested that it, it actually funnels that traffic into a slower pattern. You know what I mean? Not trying, you know, just saying that I don't see people going fifty miles an hour when the Renaissance period's going on because there's cars hugging each side of the road and people are slowing down, you know.
Also, just to add to that, event aside, I don't wanna complicate your understanding of it. I, I get simplifying it, but there is, there are a lot more factors that are considered and ways to approach how much traffic that intersection in particular will actually see. Because you have ambient traffic going by and our trips for this project are not a direct add to that. There's a lot of other things that are considered. I'm not a traffic engineer, we have them in-house, they, they have worked with DOT throughout this process. But I just wanted to, to clarify that.
Totally, I totally get that. My understanding is basically that, that much traffic, right, that much traffic will be funneled into this, into this space, right? That's how much business will be captured on, basically off of the road almost, on, based on these averages. And as a result, like just kind of my conclusion of that is that's how much, how much more traffic will be in that location kind of on a continual basis. Is everybody following me on that in terms of like how I'm drawing that conclusion?
Not really.
So that much traffic will be in there, right, it will be in that.
Yeah, but not at all one time.
Right, no, on top of everything else, no, not all at one time, right? But it'll all be kind of filtering, slowed down and kind of filtering in and out of that. And so it's slowed down, so at that one location, based on how much business is coming in, it'll basically increase the traffic by that amount, at that, at that spot.
Do you, do you really think that the amount of traffic is going to increase because of that business? Or is the traffic that is already going by there gonna be going to that? So that percentage of traffic that is specifically coming from other areas specifically to go to that place, I think is far less. I think the traffic that is going by.
Yep.
Will go, yes.
Yep.
But.
We've proven that to be, that exact statement to be true with the analysis we've completed. And I did verify, there is a copy of the TMP on file with the town. So if you need that information, the full TMP we submitted is, is there. But it does address that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we grant this first waiver of access into the site.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed?
You abstaining, Kevin?
I just felt like there was gonna be more discussion, I wasn't quite ready for a vote, but I'm not against the waiver. I guess I could, but I missed my opportunity to vote.
You're not, you're not against it though, is what you're saying, or?
No, but I just, I just felt like, okay. It seemed like Andrew was still going through the paper, so I thought we were gonna have more discussion on the waiver.
Well, the motion is made.
Yeah, it's true, I mean, it's true.
Did the motion pass?
Passed.
Yes.
I just wanted somebody to say it.
Sorry, yes, yes, it passed.
Just a quick clarification, is John a voting member?
No, he doesn't, he's named Roger.
Okay, he hasn't been around, okay, so. Rogers has been here for longer and he's been following it.
Got it, so it was three to one with.
A bonus, I see.
One extension. Okay, thank you. So the, the second waiver request is around the ordinance standard for parking stall depth and an aisle width of twenty-six feet. The aisle widths exceed twenty-six feet, so I, I don't think that's really part of the waiver request. The waiver request really is about the, the parking stall depth to deviate from that requirement for twenty-four. We felt this was reasonable because they're proposing smaller parking spaces that would have less stormwater impact. Generally, as I noted in the memo, the parking stall depth in, in many places was twenty for a very long time and, and many places it's gone to eighteen feet deep. So twenty-four does seem, you know, excessively large unless every truck's got a plow on it, something like that, but it, it seems like a reasonable waiver request to consider.
Kendrick, did you come up with any information as far as how much you're reducing the impervious by going to the tighter?
No, so we're proposing them at twenty feet long, so it's still longer than what I would consider typical at nine by eighteen, which is really standard, a lot of towns actually are now increasing to eighteen and a half. But just food for thought. No, I have not done a calculation on that amount of impervious, but with that.
It does bring it down significantly.
Right, so every parking, let's just say every parking space, you're reducing the area by four by nine. So that's over thirty-nine parking spaces, assuming that that impervious is cutting into landscaped areas. If they were to be twenty-four feet, general math, that's a pretty big increase in impervious area.
One thousand four hundred and four square feet.
Okay, good, I can do that in my head.
One thousand four hundred and four square feet.
Will be added because of?
No, you subtract it by shrinking the stalls by feet and thirty-nine, so you're getting thirty-six square feet per stall. Times that by thirty-nine, you're at one thousand four hundred and four.
So it's making a little bit less of an impact, so.
You, yeah. In some cases, we would also have to move parking to different areas of the site. It has more of a domino effect than just taking it directly out of the landscaping, just a general comment. We'd have to make sure that all of our ESSs, radii onsite that we've designed still make sense if we, if we add that additional impervious area as well, so could cause some issues in other, other places.
Yeah, go ahead.
You good? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the waiver for the parking layout and design going from twenty-foot stalls instead of twenty-six foot stalls.
Second, Alan?
All in favor? All opposed?
And the, the final waiver request is, it's one I kind of glossed over by initially, but I do agree that it should be considered by the board. I, I think the, the applicant's rep had said that there's a conflicting wording in there and, and it might be a little confusing to read, but it, it's essentially about no drive-through facility located in an area where the site's adjacent to a residential use, meaning if there's a house next door or a residential zone where most homes in Acton are located. So it, it could be located in a commercial zone where there's no house next door, but there could very well be a house next door in a commercial zone as well. So in this case, the drive-through facility is quite far. It's at least a hundred and fifty feet from the property line, which is one of the reasons where I did not consider it adjacent to a residential use, but it is on that side of the property. So I think it is worth the, the board discussing this evening. The distance is, I think maybe at least a hundred and fifty feet, I will say that. The limited clearing show estimated sixty-five feet of retained forested shrubby vegetation between the dry while and the property line. And the existing residential use, the existing home is, I believe, a couple hundred feet even beyond that on, on the abutting property. So again, I, I think with those factors in mind, this is a reasonable waiver to consider.
Mr. Chair? So, yeah, no, in terms of the, the wording, right, residential zone, correct me if I'm wrong, right, there is no designated residential zone. There is no residential zone in the town.
So every commercial zone allows residential structures.
That's right, but like rural, critical rural, there's the village, right, there's mixed use, but there's no residential zone.
It's just designated certain commercials, so certain, certain commercial entities are only allowed in certain zones.
Yep, and so.
Well, the zone is called rural residential though.
I understood.
Well, it's always a whole rule, see, the rule are critical, but then there's an overlay of a commercial A, B, or C or mixed use.
Exactly, and so residential use implies there's a house on the next parcel.
Or unless it's a vacant lot.
In this case, there's a house on the next block.
In this specific case?
In this specific case, there's a house on the next block which makes it a residential use.
Fact, yes.
Fact, right, okay. So we have to look at this as in it is next to a residential use, right, okay.
Correct.
So in this one, yeah, no, I, I am not in favor of approving this particular waiver because there is not a specific sight line, whether it's thirty feet, a hundred, three hundred feet, whatever it is, there's nothing that's defined. And so whatever that we decide here, it makes it, that decision is subjective, based on our own interpretation of what we see as reasonable. And then that becomes a standard and it becomes very difficult to apply to future project decisions.
Generally, waiver requests are done on a case-by-case basis.
Sure.
And, and I think what I'm hearing you say is, you know, you're worried about, you know, are you establishing a precedent that you have to use in future decisions? And I think that's a reasonable consideration, but from a practical standpoint, you're not. You, you are allowed to consider waiver requests on a case-by-case basis. And there, there could be things on other projects mitigating circumstances where they're, it, it could be closer to a property line, but the, the very, the conservation easement or a no-cut buffer and it would never be cut, or it's an open field, but it's four hundred feet away.
Sure.
So each one should be considered on its own. You are correct, this is gonna be up to each individual board member based on your own judgment. There is no formula or objective standard. It says, you know, they, they shall not be located next to a residential use.
That's it, that right there sounds pretty cut and dry, you know, in lieu of, in lieu of a, right?
It does mention noise and buffering specifically.
Yep, yep, excuse me, and so in, in lieu of any specific number given, that language seems pretty direct. And to go against that language, I think, I think also sets a bad precedent, not just for the current, the current board, but whatever the board looks like in the future, in terms of, you know, they can be subjective about their decision-making. So anyway, for, for those reasons, I'm against granting this particular waiver.
Well, I think we should consider also the actual resident who was abutting here, has been part of this process all along, has had questions for you, you've answered them and seems to have had his concerns, been at length so far, so.
We even offered to put up a fence along the drive-through lane in order to, that noise coming from the order board to kind of bounce back toward the house, I, I'm sorry, the building, and avoid going over into his property and they, they were like, that's not necessary at this time. We, we've tried to even offer more and they don't feel the need to.
Kendrick, is, is there anything that stipulates that there would be no cutting of that sixty-five foot natural buffer?
No, but we can happily add a note to the plan that the buffer must remain in perpetuity.
Yep.
Yep.
I think that would, I think that would help, I think that would help a, a lot. You know, especially if there's, if, if for some reason that property changed hands down the road or something like that. As long as that was maintained, I, I would be in, I would be in favor of the waiver.
Yep, we can show a dimension on the current, as shown the tree line. It, it varies, but we can just kind of cover it with a general dimension. Yeah, as shown on the plan.
Yep.
And as marked in the field, we'll have to mark the tree line, I believe is a requirement prior to construction anyway, so happy to include that as a plan note.
Mr. Chairman, based on that, what she has just said, that I would make a motion that we accept the design of the drive-through facility, even though it is, you know, the waiver of being a next-door residential use, based on the facts of, they have been working with the residents next door and will continue to do so, and also them not having a no-cut zone with that sixty-five foot natural buffer.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed?
Three to two.
So I guess we're back to changes to the plan. There was a couple things that we mentioned at the previous meeting that you'd agreed to put on the plan, kind of like the trashcans, did you manage to get that onto the plan?
Oh, nope.
I just like to try and reduce the amount of litter in the town.
Not for dumpsters, you're not looking for the dumpsters then, you have the trashcans.
No, they already have dumpsters behind the, as far as I know, I'm looking for a trashcan.
Like someone coming out of the store and opening that.
Yeah, by the entrance of the store, by the gas pumps, I think we mentioned that were gonna be anywhere, but I'd like to see them on the plan. And then I think there was mention of one at the end of the drive-through lane, just for people to have that.
Yep.
Bagged, you know, so it doesn't end up on Milton Mills Road or one or not.
Yeah, we can definitely add those along with the plan note for the buffering. I just, I, I'd ask the board to consider making these conditions of approval. If you're willing to vote this evening and do that, we can get you plans in a matter of days turned around and can satisfy those conditions that they're made, made into conditions, rather than having to come back for another. rather than having to come back for another meeting. If there's anything else that we forgot to add to the plans. I think Gavin, you had asked for, it was a good ask, a twenty-five-foot buffer to be shown, the twenty-five-foot buffer to be shown on the landscape plan.
Yeah, I saw you had that green line on one of the plans earlier.
I did, but technically in the set that, I'm outing myself here, technically in the set that I submitted to the board, I didn't add the green line, but I added it for reference. So we'll make that change as well on the final plan set.
And there was a space in the buffer that you said there would be no buffer, so to speak, somewhere...
Yep, that, yeah, down...
A little bit lower than that, I think, right, in this sort of area?
It was pretty small, I think, well, that, there's no, it's a hundred feet. So that's about a twenty-five, that...
I mean, it was marked out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, you saw it on the sidewalk, but I think it was probably fifty feet in length between the two trees that we're proposing. There's a utility, I'm sorry, a storm drain line that outlets from the basin there, so that's why we didn't propose any trees in that space. But in my opinion, we meet the standard because there's no density requirement for how those plantings need to be installed within the twenty-five-foot buffer. There is a fifty-foot gap where you will be able to see through to the project site from Milton Mills, but it is for a reason, underground, there's a pipe there.
Did we get that on the plan?
What on the plan?
The gap defined on the plan.
Like a specific dimension?
Well, we had it on the sidewalk. Those two states on the sidewalk that showed where it would be.
Yeah, that was just to show that, give the boards some reference as to the area that wouldn't be planted.
I'd like to see it on the paper plan that we would be signing. Because otherwise, we're undefined as to how large that gap could be.
Okay, so a dimension on the, like, running parallel to Milton Mills Road between the two trees that you see there?
Well, I'm just not really, I see there's a couple, like, rip, there's a riprap triangle and a riprap.
Are you talking here?
That's, that's the gap where that mouse arrow is, where the ditch would come down from that underdrain. The dash line interior to the property is where the soil filter is, that would go to the ditch.
Sorry, Jason. Okay, please, please.
You know what, I'm gonna...
Show it right here.
But I think...
Yeah, so the reason that gap is there is not only because of the pipe coming, the storm drain line that outlets to the riprap apron there, but because of the fact that there's a three-to-one side slope coming down from the treatment BMP's berm to the property line, and then we had to maintain a ditch so that water would continue to flow down Milton Mills Road, as it does in the existing condition. It's not ideal to plant trees on a three-to-one slope or in the near vicinity of pipes, so that's why there is a fifty-foot gap there.
Well, I'd like to see the, where the gap's gonna be on the vegetated buffer, the one that shows the vegetated buffer, because the ordinance asked for a twenty-five-foot vegetated buffer. Part of it's gonna be missing, I just wanna see it defined.
Okay, I can add a, I can add a dimension to the landscape plan.
It looks, it looks like, you know, on this plan, the length of the slope is more than twenty-five feet, what you've got there along Milton Mills Road.
I think it's about, the gap's about fifty feet.
Fifty feet, well, if we could just get it on there and then we know how big it is. And then one other thing that we discussed was the lighting, and whether or not the Duncan sign would be turned off at night. One of the members of the public mentioned the, you know, light pollution aspects of this project, and we discussed, you know, if some of these lights would be turned off at night when the Duncan was not operating, and I think, I think you addressed it briefly, you said it was hard to deal with Duncan or something, but if we could get some sort of note indicating that which lights will be turned off, I'd like, maybe we could go through your lighting section of the, of this.
Okay, so what I recall from the discussion, well, number one, we're not proposing any building signage for, like, building-mounted signage for Duncan at all. There will be a Duncan sign on the designated sign at the entrance, right below the fairgrounds, variety sign will be assigned for Duncan. In regard to security lighting, which we talked about, the site lighting can be put on a timer so that during, outside of business hours, most of the lights are turned off, but areas where people are, you know, employees are gonna be leaving the building and going to the employee parking area, let's say, those lights would stay on but could dim slightly. I don't know, is it typical to condition that for a site plan?
Well, we also had the discussion of motion-sensitive lights, like some of the security lighting around the building would be motion-activated as opposed to just on all the time.
Yeah, I think it's time to...
And I was hoping that you would, you would write up something that kind of described the lighting more than what's in here. This really just tells us where the lighting would be, but if we could get something, you know, describing...
Yeah, we can, what we can do is we can modify the lighting section of the application and include a narrative about those measures that we've talked about. I do believe timers on lights, there's a different tech package that kind of goes on those lights as opposed to motion-sensored, so I would prefer timers over motion sensors, and they would just be off when it's business hours, other than two lights. We can indicate which lights with an exhibit in the application would be kept on and which would be shut off. But I'd like, I think I'd like to address that in the application packet itself, maybe not on the site plan. I don't know that it really belongs there.
Right, yeah, so in here is fine, it's not in here. So the sign on one of nine that says Duncan, that's gonna be an illuminated sign, correct?
Yes.
So can, can we get something, writing says that it will be turned off after business hours?
I don't know that we want to agree that the project sign is gonna be shut off.
Really, because I want people to know they can get gas still.
Right, the gas pumps will be opened at all times.
It's gonna be all one sign, you're saying?
It's one, it's like a...
There's no way you can have a separate sign for part of it?
Gavin, there's a sign in here.
Oh, I looked at it, yeah, okay. But I'm sure there's some way to make it so you could turn off part of the illuminated sign.
You probably could make it so, like, the Duncan, if it's gonna say Pizza Sub Deli, like, that part of it, we could probably...
I guess my question is if it meets the signage ordinance and we're allowed to have a backlit sign, and it's not, it's, we're meeting the lighting ordinance by it being on all the time, I would prefer not to put a stipulation on it that we have to turn off parts and pieces of the entrance sign at different times.
Then all honesty, Gavin, the amount of light illuminated from that Duncan sign as opposed to the other sign that will stay lit, I don't think you're really gonna gain, I don't, you're gonna gain anything.
Well, I just think about the size, the scale of the Duncan signs that you see in San Francisco.
It's gonna be much smaller, it's gonna be much smaller than the, than the other sign.
There are dimensions on the signage details we provided.
The other sign is quite a bit bigger.
Oh, I'm just looking at the good neighbor policy and what we can do to reduce light.
Well, there's probably more white pollution coming from the commercial building next door than a sign. When you turn a corner, you got a blast in your face, that'll...
We're not, we're not talking about other buildings right now, we're just talking, just like we're not talking about...
We're talking about light pollution.
I'm talking about this particular business and what we can do, just like we had someone from the public bring this comment to us, anything we can do. And I was hoping to get something in writing that goes into this application to kind of describe that. I did mention it two meetings ago, and I was hoping that you'd have something to look at for today.
I believe to have the biggest amount of impact on light in general across the site, it would be to identify security lighting where it's needed and identify the poles that will be turned off outside of business hours. I think that's where you're gonna have the most impact on really reducing light across the site. And not to mention that your abutment, your one residential abutment is on the northwest side of the site, so site lighting in general, rather than the project sign at the entrance, I think will have a bigger impact.
Come up with something we could look at, that'd be great. I did ask for it two meetings ago, and I was hoping to have something to review, go over, you know.
There is a photometrics plan that we provided, which was required.
No, I looked at it, but it just shows where the lights are gonna be, and we did have this discussion two meetings ago. It's in the minutes, too.
Happy to revise the lighting section.
I think for like a lighting schedule, like, is that what you mean? Like a lighting schedule in terms of what lights go on and off?
Yeah, I mean, business hours, that's one of the reasons I asked what the business hours were.
But that's what you meant, like, right, like lighting, like a lighting schedule?
Yeah.
There was a lighting schedule provided on the photometrics plan.
There is one?
Yeah, it doesn't cover security lighting and timers.
Okay.
So I can specifically address that in the narrative, I think it's the best way to do that.
The lighting schedule in the packet, it's what are the fixtures? Where are the fixtures and where are those levels of light brightness on the site? I think the schedule you're talking about is like a time schedule.
Yeah, a time schedule, a time schedule.
So the applicant has addressed that comment by saying lights will be dimmed not, when the business is not operating. So I, that sounds like the response.
So outside, outside business...
And you're gonna put that in the...
We'll put it in writing in the lighting portion of the application.
No, I was asking for more, too, could some of these be motion-activated lights so they're not just dim?
Well, I think the applicant has said that they're gonna try to do something like that, so I'm...
Right, well, it's great that they tried, I'd like to see it in writing so I know what I'm dealing with.
Give her a chance to put it in writing.
Oh, absolutely, yes, I am.
So, Mr. Chair, do you, do you think you'd be valuable to kind of walk through the findings in the planner memo, section by section?
Could we, I'm just seeing if anybody else had any questions, like...
No.
Hold on one second, so Mr. Chair, down the C-101 of the plan, what are these, I see the three-hundred-foot rings around the individual wells around the plan. What are these larger circumference blue rings?
The purple down below.
Down...
Down at the bottom.
Yeah, down there, yeah, what are those?
It's a smiley face, Captain. It's a thousand-foot, the thousand-foot buffer on all of the, or on the two existing public transient wells that serve the fairgrounds and on the right-hand side, Iron Tales.
Right, the public wellheads, is that a variance you're requesting from MEDEP to be able to build? That is a variance you're still waiting on?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we just had a meeting with them yesterday, actually.
Yep.
It's, DEP, we filed a UST, which is an underground storage tank application, and that included a variance to be within one thousand feet of the wells, but outside of the three-hundred-foot set.
Right, yeah, because the statute states, like, underground storage tanks are not allowed inside a thousand feet of public use wells, right? So water quality is a big, is a big concern of mine with this project, mainly because we have no municipal water supply, everything we get is tapped right out of the ground, right? And so that, that has to be considered, you know, even as to whether or not even the most remote risk is worth, is worth it, quite frankly. Going inside a thousand feet to a well that has no other service points, all right, that services both Iron Tales and existing business as well as the fairgrounds for however many thousands of people every year, that's one of the major considerations on top of. Is there another variance request or waiver request to build inside the Moussum watershed?
No.
That there isn't one, okay, okay.
But as far as the variance that we've requested, we've satisfied, we haven't gotten approved permit yet to bear, but we've satisfied that variant, the variant standards or requirements that state, we have to, in order to, I'm sorry, let me back up, in order to get the variance granted, we have to either prove that groundwater does not move in a direction from the underground storage tank toward the public transient well that we're gonna be within a thousand feet of, or we have to provide engineering measures for the underground storage tanks that are considered above and beyond state standards. And the state has criteria for proving that you're above and beyond those measures. A lot of that includes alarms on your tanks, the fact that they're double-walled, they'll have a spill prevention plan in place, they'll have to do trainings with their employees in case a spill happens, either superficially or the tanks are overfilled in both cases. So we have proven, we only had to prove one or the other, we've actually proven both. As far as the groundwater is concerned, we conducted a hydrogeologic study that was done by a geologist certified in the state of Maine, and there's a large ridge basically that runs, bisects the site and then runs toward the Iron Tales well, and it divides the water into the, basically into the two watersheds, Moussum Lake and Loon Pond. And so water from our underground storage tanks, groundwater, is not flowing in the direction of either well. And then as far as the engineering measures, we provided details of the tanks and all of the details on the alarm systems, yada, yada, from Samar and Sons, who will be installing the tanks themselves.
So can you guarantee that this installation will not contaminate any of the drinking water in the town?
I'm not going to make that statement here, but we have provided every...
No, I know, man, no, but that's... No, 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 hold on, hold on, Jason, yeah, I understand, but that's, but the point is, like, I understand the remote risk, I do. All right, I do understand the remote risk. It's whether or not even the remote risk to drinking water, right?
That was just an absurd question.
I, I, it was hyperbolic, I understand, right?
You're reaching, I'm telling you now, you're reaching.
It's hyperbolic to make the point on whether or not the risk is worth it.
That'd be like saying that would contaminate my well down the road.
I understand, I understand.
Way down the road, like seven-point-two miles to be exact.
Anyway, so, yeah, this, there are findings the board needs to make around groundwater quality and safe drinking water. Those, again, those questions are in the back of the memo, and there are some standards locally around what the board can use to help make that determination. So to the extent that there's additional state standards and requirements and, you know, things you can do to get waivers from those requirements that isn't part of the local ordinance, but you do, as the planning board, need to consider groundwater. So I think you're right to raise groundwater is something to consider. And I would direct you to the, the local ordinance, the state will do their portion of the review, and the planning board needs to do the local portion of the review. And there's some findings in the memo related to that.
And just to, so I'm clear, the local ordinance does not restrict wells within, I'm sorry, underground storage tanks within a thousand feet of public transient wells, correct?
Not to my knowledge, I don't believe it does.
So, Dave, when do those cameras, is it two hours, they shut, automatically shut off?
I don't think so, no. I think he'll go as long as, you mean...
No, 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 they shut, they shut off after a certain time.
I believe it is two hours.
That the red light's...
Yeah, but it'll go blank on the other side. And I just don't know if we wanna continue this without the cameras or if we wanna, you know, keep on going. I mean, I have no problem either way.
Well, we need that, that public record, maybe.
We'll have the minutes.
We have the minutes.
We do have the minutes. So, uh, in this memo, um, you know, once the board has raised their questions and everyone's had a chance to review the draft findings, there is a suggested motion on page two. Or, excuse me, page three. And, um, I don't know if we're at that point, if everyone's had a chance to ask their questions and make considerations. I think that the findings are, again, are the bulk of this. It's kind of the record of what's been submitted, what the applicant has stated during the meetings, things that, um, we've discussed over the last four meetings. But again, um, the, the board would have to make a motion at the appropriate time and then walk through the conclusions that start on page 10.
So, we would need to go through the conclusions of law first?
The motion, uh, should be read, I've got a couple notes on conditions of approval and then, uh, the board needs to go down to the conclusions and say, you know, based on the conclusions that the plan for development does or does not, and you'd have to answer that question as part of the motion.
Yeah, and you have the, um, subject to the following conclusion?
The, correct, so the subject to the following conditions, I, I made notes that there should be potential condition of approval number one, the no-cut, uh, forested buffer, uh, 65 feet in width along the residential property line. And condition of approval number two, to, uh, show trashcan locations on the plan at the end of the drive-through, at the store entrance and at, uh, the fueling pumps. And condition of approval number three, add a dimension to the landscape plan for the space between the trees and the vicinity of the drainage.
Yep. Any update to the lighting aspect of it?
If, that's fine to include that as a condition.
Is that acceptable of you, Gavin?
Well, I don't know if it's so much as a condition, it's just, we'd like to have added and then review it. So, I mean, I'd like to review it before I vote on the application. You know what I mean? It's not just a condition that they do it, it's like, what does it say? And it's a, it's a condition we agree on tonight, that's something they'd like to add to the application and that we can review, but once it's added, it won't be a condition.
Could we be specific in the condition of what we'll be addressing within the narrative, which is, um, listing out business hours of operation and reducing specific lights to those business hours which will run on timers in order to shut them off? And I will also provide an exhibit showing the site plan with which poles will be shut off at what times? We can, we can condition it very specifically so that you know that you're, you're getting the information that you, that you want.
I don't know, we were approaching doing that and, but it didn't seem like people wanted to do that tonight. So, we just gonna have you bring something forward and we were gonna look at it. Kind of what we got to, everything was kind of, uh, so, all right, you know? I don't, I'm not sure we, we are at the point where we're gonna be voting yea or nay on this thing tonight, so. I think it's fine to, to make these changes and bring them before us to look at it.
Um, Ben, can you offer any input to the board about how conditions of approval, the order in which permits would occur pertaining to conditions of approval?
So, many of these conditions are things that, um, a board would, would ask for and say, you know, I want to see these things before I sign an approved plan. So, like, showing trashcan locations is not a typical condition of approval. You just say, okay, we talked about trashcans, they agreed to them and we will sign a plan that shows trashcans.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think it's fine if you want to include those as conditions of approval. Same thing with, with some of these others. If you want to, and, uh, this may be what you're referring to, many times, conditions of approval will say, prior to building permits or prior to a certificate of occupancy, an updated lighting package, you know? And then that way, there's an assurance that either before construction activities begin or before the, this operation is, uh, open, that those, uh, submissions have been met. I would also suggest a relatively standard condition of approval that, uh, prior to building permits, DOT and DEP and other outside agency permits must be obtained. So, that would bring it to, you know, five conditions of approval that are relative to, um, these specific things we've talked about tonight.
Mr. Chairman, based on that, um, based on the application and the related documents and the information provided by the applicant, the written and oral comments of the applicant, reviewing officials and members of the public as reflected in the public record and the findings of fact in conclusion of law in the planner memo dated March 5th, 2025, the planning board finds that the site plan application for the fairgrounds variety satisfies the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance and therefore approves the application subject to the, the three, uh, conditions that were brought up tonight as well as the, um, passing of the DEP and the DOT, uh, permit. Those three were the, uh, the 65-foot no-cutting, the trashcans on the, uh, on the site plan, uh, the lighting schedule and the, uh, updated landscape plan showing the, uh, plantings and the buffers.
I'll second that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
So, we're not going through the conclusions of law?
Call in favor of the motion on the table. All closed. Three to two.
I'd like to say the reason I was opposing it is that we haven't read through the approval standards and criteria and there's still a lot of information regarding groundwater that we'd like to at least discuss with the applicant that we tried to discuss before, um, because I just wanted to make that statement. I don't feel like we went through the full process. It's not that I'm against the application, it's that.
The, the, the process is, um, referencing the findings in the memo. I, I do recommend that you, you go through, uh, the conclusions and answer those questions. The motion implied that they were all answered in the affirmative that they, and I'll let the board go through.
Did it really? The motion said that all the conclusions of law are all, are all good? Is that what that means?
The board, all right, the board should go through the conclusions individually.
Yeah.
But the motion to approve the project based on the findings and conclusions was the motion.
Wow.
Just adjourned?
So, at, at this point, I would say if it is not necessary, but if the board wants to go through those conclusions one by one and answer those questions, is the first one, the plan for development does or does not reflect the natural capacities of the site, these are the, the site plan conclusions that, that the board has to reach to approve or deny a project.
Right, we shouldn't be doing that before the motion.
Well, that's why I asked specifically.
Yeah.
And I was told that the motion.
Comes first before the conclusion of law.
I did ask that specifically before I made my motion.
Yeah.
Ben agreed.
That's how things work.
So, Mr. Chair, if you want to read through those and answer those questions, it is completely acceptable to vote on them as a group, which essentially is, is what that motion did. Or alternatively, you can go through them one at a time and vote on them each individually. If any of them fail, the, the project would not have been approved.
I am now confused. I, I am. I am thoroughly confused. I was like, did we approve every single one of these conclusions of law with that motion or not?
Based on that motion.
We did.
It was approving all of the findings. There are all of the findings and the conclusions.
Yes, you just said facts and fine and the conclusions. That's what you just said, right? Is that true? That is a true statement?
That is the wording of the.
Okay, so that's, that's in the minutes and.
So, the question Adam asked before that was, if we make this motion, do we have to do the conclusions of law first, I believe, right, Adam?
Yes. I asked specifically, should we be covering the conclusions of law before we voted on the actual findings of fact?
And I think Chris's answer was, we would do the motion first. If, if you would like to, as the person who made the motion, you can, uh, make a motion that we reconsider the vote that was just taken and then, uh, restate the motion and go through each conclusion, if you wish. It's not a requirement.
No, I'm gonna stand away from this. And we'll go through these.
Does anybody want to read them or do you want me to read them? The plan for development does or does not reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support development. Vehicular access to the site is or is not on roads which have adequate capacity to accommodate additional traffic generated by the development. It does? Vehicular access to and from the development is or is not safe and convenient? The DOT is working with them. Access, accessways do or do not meet standards for separation from intersections and separation from other accessways? Nice to speak up. It does? The layout of the site does or does not provide for safe movement of the passenger service and emergency vehicles through the site?
Does.
Okay. Off-site street parking does or does not conform to the standards described in the Town of Acton's ordinance?
It does, including the variants.
Oh, the waiver, excuse me. The site plan does or does not provide for system of pedestrians, pedestrian ways within the development appropriate to the type of scale of development? Adequate provisions have, have not been made for the collection and disposal of stormwater that runs off the post-streets, parking areas, roofs and other surfaces? The project will or will not cause unreasonable soil erosion? Natural vegetation will or will not be preserved and protected whenever possible? Vegetation will be preserved, so will not and will. What? I didn't say anything. The site develop, uh, uh, adequate provisions have or have not been made for supply of water? The project does, does not provide adequate method of sewage disposal? The project does, does not provide adequate utilities to meet the anticipated use of the project? The develop, development will or will not preserve the landscape in its natural state insofar as practical during construction? The site develop and use will or will not adversely impact either the quality or quantity of groundwater available to abutting properties or to public water supply systems? The project will or will not have adverse impacts on water quality? The project does or does not involve the handling, storage or use of materials identified by standards of the federal or state agencies as hazardous, special or radioactive? The project will or will not adversely affect the water quality or shoreline of any adjacent water body? The applicant has, does not have adequate financial capability, capacity and technical capacity to carry out the project? The project does or does not provide for adequate disposal of solid waste? The project will or will not have adverse effect on historic or archaeological resources? The project is or is not situated within a special flood hazard area as identified by Federal Emergency Management Agency? The project will or will not provide adequate fire protection? Did they speak to the fire chief today, about the dry hydrants? Say it wouldn't be amusing if we had to. He's going right to the phone. And he says his, his, he has a capacity of only 2,000 gallons and that's not enough supporting services will be there. Because I wasn't concerned about plastic. I wasn't concerned, I haven't, I brought a plastic, about the dry hydrants.
I think we're done.
I think so.
We're done.
Thanks.
Thank you all, it's been a long road. We appreciate your input. Appreciate the approval.